Good evening, I call this meeting to order. It's the regular council meeting of March 11th, 2019. The time is 7:30 PM. Welcome to Madison Heights. Will the clerk take roll call?
Mayor Potemblis.
I'm here.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilor Grabstein.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Mayor Hartwell.
I'm here. Would you please rise if you're able for an invocation to be led by Councilman Geddings and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
We thank God for having given us the opportunity to meet together here today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again, receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, you may be seated. I understand we have additions to the agenda tonight. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the council add to the agenda, under reports? Is that where you want that?
Yes.
Under reports, the tentative agreement between the city and the Patrol Officers Association.
Very good, thank you. Is there support?
Your honor.
Yes, Mr. Bliss?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion to add this item to reports? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Are there any other additions or deletions? Okay. All right, we have a couple of presentations tonight. It's my honor to introduce two of our elected officials in Lansing, State Senator Jeremy Moss and State Representative Jim Ellison, who have a legislative update for us. Gentlemen, the floor is yours. Welcome to Madison Heights.
It's an honor to be here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for having me and State Representative Ellison here. I'm Jeremy Moss. I am the newly-elected state senator here for 11 communities in southern Oakland County, including the wonderful community here in Madison Heights, and I just wanted to give kind of an update of what's been going on in Lansing. Even in these first two, two and a half slow months as we've ceded the new legislature in the 100th legislative session, it's been, as I said, very slow, but actually, the last week, I think, accelerated a lot with the governor's budget presentation. And I can go into a little bit of the details, but I know Representative Ellison wants to hit on that as well. The good news is, I am having a budget town hall in our district, on the far end of our district, in Farmington Hills, on this Saturday, March 16th, at 10:00 AM, at Farmington Hills City Hall, with our House Democratic Leader, State Representative Christine Gregg, which I can get into a little bit more of the details of the budget proposal, and would be happy to share that with the residents that are interested in attending that. But I think first and foremost, this is a beginning of a conversation. Our budget year starts October 1st, so we obviously have to pass a budget by September 30th. And what the governor presented was her proposal to fund state government and its operations from October 1 of next year to, or October 1 of this year until September 30th of 2020. And there's a lot of good things in the budget. There's a lot of things that I think are going to be negotiated or worked out with, because we have a divided government now, with a Democratic governor and a Republican legislature. We have to have conversations with one another to make sure that everything meets approval of the legislative body, and it's something that the governor will sign. So this is the beginning of a longer process. The good news is, is that there doesn't seem to be too many changes in the trajectory of revenue sharing. And I was a city councilman in Southfield, and know that year after year after year, revenue sharing was on the decline. And for some reason, over the last several years, I think Jim Ellison and I were just loud enough in Lansing that the trajectory is actually going in the opposite direction now, finally. We are trying to sort out a way to better fund our local communities so that you can function and operate as you need. When I was on the city council, whenever we outperformed the revenue sharing that we thought we would get from the state, we put it into public safety and local roads. That's what our constituents demanded of us. And I know that the council members here and the mayor of Madison Heights are making sure that the money that's received from Lansing is going to go to good use here to provide services for the citizens here. So I think the two loudest voices truly, from that local perspective of making sure that we fund local communities so that you're not going through financial hardships, that we don't have to have a state takeover in any way, shape, or form, are me and Representative Ellison. Representative Ellison, of course, is the longtime mayor of Royal Oak, now serves as the lead Democrat on the House Local Government Committee. I'm actually entering my fifth year on the Local Government Committee. I served four years in the House and now entering into the Senate Local Government Committee. So the good news is, is we speak your language. We're like two council members, I think, serving in the legislature in Lansing, and that's how we operate. You know, we kind of are boosted by the people that we talk with on the local level, not only the council members, but the constituents. So that's the good news. The other thing that I really have been working on, really for the last four years in Lansing, is increasing government accountability and government ethics and government transparency, because right now, Michigan ranks dead last out of all state governments in those categories of government accountability. And that's not just a Jeremy Moss assessment of it. The Center for Public Integrity, which is this outside independent organization, measured 50 state governments, all the state governments, and measured 13 functions of those state governments. And Michigan failed 10 of those functions, including access to public information, accountability of the executive, accountability of the legislative branch. And part of the reason is that we are one of only two states that shield the citizens from public information, from freedom of information requests of the legislature and governor's office. So as a city councilman and as members of the city, former city councilman and as members of the city council know, that if a citizen has a question on what goes on here and wants to hold government officials accountable, or wants to just seek information about an issue that they're having, that they have to deal with City Hall, they can go to the clerk and file a Freedom of Information Act request for that information, and we are at the local level compelled by law to give that information to the taxpayer, to the citizen who requests it. We're not accountable at the state level, and we're one of only two states that shield citizens from this information. So for four years, I've been very hard, fighting a hard fight to correct that. I have a good partner, a Republican colleague of mine, Ed McBroom, and I have gotten together to write a bipartisan proposal. And we've had conversations when we were House members, and now engaging in those conversations in the state senate, to at long last make us the 49th state. I wish I was this smart. I wish I was this smart to come up with this landmark legislation. But reality is, we're fighting to be the 49th state that does this, that subjects us to the same amount of accountability and transparency as we mandate our local city councils to be held to. So the good news is that tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM, the House Government Operations Committee is going to take up our bills for a vote. And we're going to try and see this usher through the House, and then at long last, we've made it through the House before. Last session, it passed the House unanimously, but was stalled by the state senate. Well, I'm in the state senate now to guide it through that process as well, and hopefully onto the governor's desk for her signature. And so, you know, lift a little bit of the cloud over Michigan and make sure that we are running an accountable, ethical, transparent state government that residents can hold accountable. So that's probably the biggest legislative update I have over the first two and a half months in office. As I said, we're going to do a budget town hall on the far end of the district. So right now, on the far east side of the district, my district and the 11th state senate district also goes through Hazel Park, Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, Huntington Woods, Oak Park, Royal Oak Township, Southfield and Lathrow Village, and then on the west side of the district, Farmington and Farmington Hills. So I share Madison Heights with 10 other communities, but I'm going to try and be as accessible and visible as possible. There are four state representatives that serve in the district in addition to Representative Ellison, and we've partnered up with coffee hours with each of them. Representative Ellison's coffee hours start at 7:30 in the morning, so we're going to have to change the timing on that. Hopefully, maybe more of an afternoon or evening event. But we're going to do some things here in Madison Heights in partnering with Representative Ellison. And I'm just looking forward to getting to know the council members better, the community better, and be as transparent and as accessible as possible. And to that end, I invited my legislative and district director to join me. I know he's probably been communicating with some of you via email, Jason Hoskins, who is in my House office as well, and now is joining me in the senate. So if you can't get ahold of me, Jason is my eyes and ears for all things local, and if you have any issues, please don't hesitate to reach out to our office. My official state website for citizens who might want to see what's going on in my office is senedems.com. It's a state website, senedems.com/moss, M-O-S-S. And then if anyone needs to ever reach out to my office, my email is senjmoss@senedem.com.gov. And then the phone number to our office, which we hope you engage if you need to, is So I'm just looking forward to the next four years, maybe more, of partnership with Madison Heights, and don't hesitate to reach out. So I can kind of bounce it over to Representative Ellison now.
Thank you, Jeremy. Pleasure to be back here again. As Jeremy, I'm going to try to pick up a little bit from where Jeremy was talking. Now that our colleagues on the other side of the aisle realize there's a new sheriff in town, they have a tendency to talk to us more, and they know that they're going to need our cooperation on a lot of issues that we've been trying to change for a very, very long time. For example, the Senate Majority Leader, Mike Shurkey, has come out publicly and said that we need to do something about Prop. A. We need to do something about how we finance local governments. And as Jeremy said, I'm minority vice chair on the Local Government Committee, but we've also added the caveat of municipal finance as the purview of that committee. And so I've been working with my members on that committee to try to look at things like Prop. A and Hadley, Hadley Row up in particular, we're looking at. So in the future, but possible now, now that we've got a little bit more people on the floor that listen to us. But I wanted to touch a little bit on probably the biggest question of the week, and that's the governor's road tax, to fix the roads. So I do have a prepared statement, because I will never get everything out if I don't. Michigan has some of the worst roads in the nation. I'm sure we all know that. The 2018 American Society of Civil Engineers report gave Michigan a D minus on the condition of its roads. Considering emails and phone calls that we've been receiving in my office this past week, I can bet that you are all hearing from neighbors, constituents, coworkers, and families as to their take on the governor's plan. Let's call it what it is. It's a proposal to raise the gas tax by 45 cents to do three things. One, improve state road conditions to 90% good or fair in 10 years. Two, stop playing the current shell game with the state's general fund to divert education dollars from the one-time road fixes that are unsustainable and harming our children. That has probably been one of the biggest things that people don't realize, is the money we've been using to fix roads is coming out of the school aid fund. And number three, provide a tax offset to reduce the impact of the gas tax for low-income families. But regardless of whether this plan is the best plan or not, and we all do know and accept that this is not the final plan, this plan will never get a vote on the floor. It's going to be, we'll be voting on some type of plan that'll be a combination of the governor's proposal, the senate's proposal, and the House proposal, and we'll have that in place before August 1st. But for history, for nearly 40 years, our state has punted on fixing the roads by using short-term funding sources like bonding, temporary federal funds, one-time general fund appropriations, instead of permanent, stable funding source. These short-term fixes only slowed down the rate of deterioration, but at no point have the small bits of funding ever been enough to reverse the continuous decline of our road conditions. It's only masked the severity of the problem and hidden from the people the true level of the funding problem. Michigan ranked 46 out of 50 states in per capita spending on roads, and it was last among the great lakes shakes, according to the Tax Policy Center of the Brookings Institution. State roads are currently at a 78% good or fair condition and are forecasted to get precipitously worse quickly unless we make the additional investment need to correct our current course. If we do, if we do nothing different than what we've already doing, the number of roads in poor condition are projected to double from 22% to 44% in just the next five years. Michigan's bad roads not only affect travel economy, but the problem is now so great that, you know, to do nothing would endanger the safety of motorists on Michigan's roads. And I'm sure we've all heard stories about blown tires and broken rims and car damage to these potholes. So for every day that the problem goes unaddressed, our transportation system will continue to deteriorate at a growing rate and endangering more drivers. And the cost to rebuild those roads grow. It costs way more to fix a road in poor condition than it does a road in fair condition. There are no easy solutions. It's a big problem that requires a big solution. And depending on the source, there have been many independent studies, with Michigan's total transportation funding need is projected to be somewhere between $2.2 and $2.7 billion annually. So whether Governor Whitmer's plan is truly the best plan or not depends on the larger context of the budget as a whole. But I like the fact that she's providing all of us the long overdue and quite frankly deserved reality check that previous administrations have failed to provide with honesty. Fixing our roads is critical, but the funding for the fix, and for all the government in that matter, needs to be done with more honesty than it has in the past. Citizens deserve to know and understand how their dollars are being spent. They can sense the shell game that's been happening even when their state leaders have not been forthright and transparent. I believe so strongly in the groundwork that Jeremy has laid to create the most open and transparent government here in Michigan. Because it doesn't matter whether the gas tax is raised or not, or if we find, excuse me, find some other way to fund our roads, if the trust of the people is not there, then we will not be doing right by our citizens, our roads, or our future. We have got to learn to let the people know what we're doing and develop a trust or we're never going to get ahead. As I said before, the budget process is only just beginning with the governor's proposal. Both the senate and the house will now weigh in with their own budgets, which will be equally evaluated and picked over for both good and bad. In the end, we will have to pass a budget that comes to an overall agreement. So while the exact numbers are likely to change, and whether or how much taxes may increase, it's too soon to predict. But I can assure you that we will be approaching all budget proposals equally based upon criteria that evaluate not only how much they are designed to fix known problems like our roads, local funding and education, but as to how straightforward and transparent they are. Our citizens deserve honesty, and when there is trust, we will find agreement. That's all I've got.
Well, thanks for the report.
Any questions or anything, myself or Jeremy?
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I would just like to compliment Representative Moss and Senator Ellison for...
Senator Moss and Representative Ellison.
Sorry, yes.
You got the promotion.
Jeremy got the promotion.
Whatever, you're from the state. But I want to thank anybody who serves in the state legislature, who has been trained and deeply entrenched in local politics, always makes a wonderful representative for us, and I appreciate the fact that you can now see things from both sides, and you won't forget the people at home that have to go through the day-by-day meeting with their public. I thank you both for your service.
Well, thank you. With the incoming new representatives we have, we have enough former municipal government officials that we are now working on forming a mayor's caucus. And it would be the local officials, not just mayors, but anybody who's served on council or commission, to help us fight through some of the problems that we all bring to the table as former local government officials, and I think it's going to be very beneficial.
Yeah, I agree. You know, and I found in my, now entering my fifth year in the state legislature, regardless of party, the people who work closest together, I think, are those who actually served on the local level, especially in this fight for increased revenue sharing, because it's a language we all speak. And it seems that, you know, we are fighting against people who don't see the value of making sure that our communities are the first thing that we fund in the budget. And so, you know, as Representative Ellison said, you know, he's going to take the lead in the House for this municipal officials caucus. I'm going to take the lead in the senate on this municipal officials caucus, working with some of our Republican friends as well, to make sure that we are forming a strong coalition, especially during budget season, to make sure that revenue sharing is predictable, is stable, and meets the needs that, and is higher, yeah, is higher, and it meets the needs that our communities expect. It's our tax dollars. We're paying it to Lansing, and there's this expectation it has to come home to fund local services, and that's why the two of us are there.
All right. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, please.
If I may, and I appreciate you gentlemen coming out and introducing yourselves, and I think that's wonderful, you come out and do that. Only issue I have to say is that the governor, first thing that she does is raise taxes. I mean, she's going to raise 50 cents, 45 cents. I mean, I know it may change, but just the sheer fact that she said that, on the backs of the working families and people of Michigan, I just have a problem with that. What she's done is, she's being honest. We don't have money to fix the roads. If we want to fix the roads to the level they're supposed to be fixed, she's saying, based on her studies, that we need 45 cents a gallon, and that's phased in over a year and a half. It's 15 cents every six months. But the reality is, we need to generate revenue, and there's not, not any extra revenue being generated. We've been working our roads by paying, robbing Peter to pay Paul. We've been taking money out of the general fund, and shortening, shortening money going to the schools. And it's, a lot of it is to subsidize some of these tax incentives that have been given over the past few years, because that's impacted the income, and there's been a general resistance to raise revenue. We, the general fund budget of state of Michigan in 2000 was $10.3 billion. The general fund budget in Michigan for 2018 is $10.7 billion. We have the same amount of money in our general fund that we had in year 2000. It has not increased for inflation, it has not increased for cost, it's the same general fund dollars. And everybody knows, you can't do what you did 20 years ago with $10,000, $10 billion. What you got to do today is not even close. So we've been wearing blinders that we haven't had to increase any taxes. We've got to increase revenue somehow. How we do it, still to be decided, but at least she stood up there and said, "This is not going to get done unless we get more revenue." And that's, she's the first governor that's said that in a good, long time. Right, right. And I know, you guys aren't her representatives, you're just part of the party, but I, and I understand what you're saying, but in terms of transparency, I mean, she didn't say that in the election. You know, she didn't say, "Well, I'm going to raise taxes if I get elected," or raise the gas tax, so, just my opinion. Yeah, no, and in fairness, during the election, it's the election, she didn't have the final budget. She wasn't governor yet, now she's seen the depth of the problem. She's changed a couple different statements. I mean, she said during the campaign that she's not going to raise the tax 20 cents, and then they presented her with the facts and figures. And 20 cents wasn't even enough. And the reality is, she spoke the truth. This is what we need. Will we, will it be 45 cents a gallon? I doubt it. I'm predicting it's probably going to be something close to 30 cents a gallon, and we're just going to have to make do, because that's what's going to happen when we do the negotiations and the compromise. But she flew it out there saying, "We need 45 cents a gallon to generate $2.5 billion a year." That's what the facts and figures say.
I'll just add maybe just an additional 30, 60 seconds on this, because I agree with you. You know, this, this doesn't make me jump up and down. I'm not, you know, this doesn't get me excited about this proposal. But the reality is, as Representative Ellison said, is we have a $60 billion state budget, and all but $10 billion is restricted. It either is money that comes in from the federal government and we have to direct it to a certain program, or it's constitutionally restricted. We can't, we can't direct it anywhere else because the constitution mandate it goes somewhere that we have to direct it. So we have $10 billion that we're working with, and we have a $3 billion road problem. In my first term, it was a $1.5 billion road problem. In my second term, it was a $2 billion road problem. It's only getting worse. It's a $3 billion problem. So in that $10 billion, we can either cut $3 billion elsewhere, which would impact your quality of life on another end, you know, it would impact criminal justice system, it would impact higher education, it would impact revenue sharing, or we could raise the $3 billion needed. And so, this is her proposal. I'm sure, you know, even our senate Republican leader said, "Yeah, this is going to have to be a revenue increasing conversation." And so, in any event, in any way, at the end of the day, we're going to have to raise the revenue needed, and this is her option, and we have several months to negotiate this out. So it's all the more reason to come to the Budget Town Hall that I'm hosting in Farmington Hills on the 16th.
You're a champion of segue.
That's right. Yep, it's this Saturday, March 16th, 10:00 AM, kind of a hospitality hour, well, snacks at 10:00 AM, but it starts 10:30 AM at Farmington Hills City Hall.
Great, thank you, Senator Moss. Thank you, Representative Ellison, yes. Before we let them go, on a completely different note, a lot of folks probably don't know this, but those who were there in the park do. When we created the concept for our now incredibly successful arts board, it was done with Representative Ellison at a park with Mayor Hartwell and I, and a handful of residents who wanted to know about how do we bring arts into the city. And so I wanted to give credit, you know, this isn't a come around one time at one meeting, you know, Representative Ellison is here frequently, and in now three months in the term, I've now seen Senator Moss a couple times already, so I'm really enthusiastic about the type of representation that our city is receiving. I would also wonder, will either of you be at karaoke for the arts board on Wednesday night? You'll be there?
I guess I have to put it on mine, too. I'll try my best. Try my best.
Please do.
Please don't ask me to sing. I'll be there with everybody else.
We take donations from people who don't sing. It's okay. All right, thanks, Your Honor. Thanks. Any other questions? All right, thank you, gentlemen. You're free to leave. We have another presentation tonight. It's from the Clinton River Watershed Council's Water Towns program. It's the green infrastructure support in Madison Heights. Melissa, do you have a report?
Yes, Don Carpenter from Drummond Carpenter LLC is here on behalf of the Clinton River Watershed to present a short PowerPoint presentation and answer any questions about this conceptual design that they've created for green infrastructure improvements throughout our city.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Just a quick overview before Don takes over. I'd also like to welcome Chris Bobrick and Ann Brazy from Clinton River Watershed Council. Thank you for joining us tonight. So as council is aware, last spring, council was requested and approved a resolution to participate in the Water Towns program. Water Towns is an initiative designed by the Clinton River Watershed Council, you know, spearheading their mission of protecting, enhancing, and celebrating the Clinton River and its watershed. After council adopted that resolution last spring, Dr. Carpenter met with staff from the DPS. We talked about some ideal areas that we'd want to look at, and his team got to work spring, summer, and fall of last year. Most of what he came up with, you'll see in tonight's PowerPoint. I did want to let council know that this, most of this PowerPoint was presented to the city's Environmental Citizens Committee in the tail end of last year, which really spearheaded and engaged conversation with them, prompted a lot of questions, really good stuff at that level. Also want to let council know, staff and I are in the process of applying for a green infrastructure grant through SEMCOG that is due by the end of the month. One of the concepts you'll see here tonight is, actually gave us the information we need to apply for that grant. So without further ado, I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Don. Chris, Chris going to take the lead first?
Yes, usually we, we present this kind of a dual purpose. Initially, explain to you what the Clinton River Watershed Council is. Mr. Vitale did a very good job of that. And so I'm going to start with first thanking you for having us here and for this opportunity. One thing I will add, though, when we listen to Dr. Carpenter's presentation, is the fact that we do offer a $5,000 mini-grant opportunity with this, with this package, and that's to help implement some of this green stormwater infrastructure. And a little bit more on Water Towns, which is one of the Clinton River Watershed Council's flagship programs, is that it focuses a holistic approach to watershed management. And this portion you'll see is kind of the green stormwater infrastructure package, but it also goes a lot deeper than that into arts and culture and history. There are a lot of opportunities to help reconnect communities to water resources, and that's really the foundation of this program. So Dr. Carpenter has a wonderful presentation for you, and so I will not hold him up. Thank you, though.
You may not only have technology, but you have... If you use these arrows, you got to point it at them.
So, thank you for having us today. We really appreciate it. I'm cognizant of the fact that the hour is getting late and you have a lot of things to discuss, so I will go relatively quickly, and then there will be time for question answers either after the presentation or later tonight. To basically answer the first question right away, Mayor Potem, I will not be at karaoke Wednesday night. I apologize, but I'm previously engaged. You really don't want to hear me sing, anyway. So, so the Clinton River Watershed Council, this is the watershed that we're in here, and that's the, the part of this project they're working on, Water Towns, which is what Chris just, just went through describing briefly. So I'm going to get to the meat of this actual project, which is, our goal was to create conceptual site plans and renderings for suggested green infrastructure improvements. So what you're going to see tonight is ideas or concepts that we came up with to help keep water out of the Clinton River, right? Let's make the environment that we live in cleaner and better for this generation and the future generations. We're going to show you how much volume of stormwater is captured and treated through all these artistic renderings and concepts. artistic renderings and concepts, we're gonna give you a cost. Two points I'd like to point out, so Chris mentioned, uh, the idea of a mini grant that's available to you, and then, um, uh, we also heard a, a little bit about the green infrastructure grant you're going to be applying for in the future. What I wanna say upfront is, what I'm showing you, you're under no obligation to do anything up there. These are concepts, these are ideas, some things are gonna strike a chord that you might like, some things are not, and that's perfectly all fine, perfectly fine, you're under no obligation to what you've seen. Also, all the work that I'm presenting here tonight was done under, with no cost to your community. This was funded by the, uh, Herb Family Foundation, for those who might remember Herb Family Lumber, this is funded through the Herb Family Foundation and the Clinton River Watershed Council, so this is of no cost to the communities that we provide this work to. Okay? So in two thousand eighteen, we're actually in the fifth year of this program, we've done this for seventeen communities so far, I'll show you some example results from previous years. So two thousand eighteen, we worked with these four communities, East Point Independence Township, McComb Township, and Madison Heights, and this is our, our final presentation of this kind of programmatic year, which went into two thousand nineteen, it's mostly a two thousand eighteen plan, though. So what is green infrastructure? Uh, that's the US EPA textbook definition of green infrastructure. Really, what I like to talk about is what green infrastructure is, it's mimicking Mother Nature, right? We've paved all the, the, uh, we've paved the, the wetlands, we've paved the forest, and all the runoff that comes from the roads, that comes from the rooftops, that goes straight into the Clinton River, it floods our basements, it's got water quality and pollution problems, so let's figure out a way to get that water back up on grade, infiltrate into the ground, use plants to do the work for us, okay? That's what we talk about. And the other added benefit of, of green infrastructure is, not only do we have cleaner water, but you create place making opportunities for people to really enjoy where they live, work, and play, right? There's a, a tremendous body of literature out there, that the greening of environment makes it that our people are healthier, they're happier, they are more productive, and so it's actually this kind of what we call a triple bottom line benefit. Yeah? So what are you gonna get? So you're gonna get a report, the report, um, is actually, I'm just gonna cut to the chase, you actually have, uh, in my bag over there, I actually should've given you before the presentation, there's a little USB drive that has digital copies of everything that we presented, all the spreadsheets, all the calculations, anything that a funding agency would wanna see, you've got it at your disposal, okay? We also have this PowerPoint presentation I'm gonna give you, there are two printed graphic boards over there that are summaries of these, most of the communities will put those in the library or outside, uh, the main office where people, you know, might come to, to register or pay taxes, um, or pay fees, and, you know, it's there, they can kinda look at and, and see what, what is being proposed, okay? The cost estimates that we're gonna be showing you, I'm gonna pick up the pace here in just a second, I promise, these are basically what we would call, uh, research-based cost estimates, we didn't go and get cost estimates for contractors, so they are conceptual level cost estimates, but we do assume that you are not using volunteers, that you're not using, uh, DPW labor, you're not using in-source labor, these are primary contract values. So a lot of the cost estimates you're gonna see up here are actually on the high end, 'cause most communities find that they can either use volunteers, or DPW, or park staff to bring these costs down, from what I'm gonna show you, but we don't like to assume that any community has the, um, resources at their disposal to do this stuff on their own. Okay? Every picture you're gonna see, not only gonna have a cost, which I described, you're also gonna have a little rain dot on their raindrop. And what that raindrop represents is, the light drop is how much runoff is coming from the site right now, if we don't do anything, and then as you convert it to green infrastructure, it's gonna be turning to a darker, darker raindrop. So if you do things like a bio swale instead of a catch basin, you might capture a hundred percent of a two-inch rainstorm, and then the drop will be completely blue. If you do something like maybe plant some native plants instead of doing turf grass, it's really nice, but it's not gonna keep as much water out of the system. So you'll see that on each one of the, the, uh, slides as well. Okay? So we focused our efforts, we always try to pick one, we work with the community to pick one neighborhood, one area, one location, in this case, we picked the basically Civic Center Town Hall area here, so that's the, the green space up there, that's the area we focused on. Okay? And that's the summary, we found many opportunities for permeable pavers, for rain gardens, for native grasses and vegetation, for bio retention, and you're gonna see these pictures as we get rolling. So here's area one, you've got this relatively large area with a lot of grass space in there, I know some of that's used for, uh, programmatic opportunities, but not all of it, there is a lot of areas along the edge here that are wet and muddy and mucky, even in the middle of the summer, so we thought this is a really good opportunity to put in rain gardens along the edge of that walking path, and then do native prairies on the backside, wonderful for butterfly habitat, for pollinators, and honestly, it ends up, long-term, being cheaper, 'cause you don't have to mow as much, so it's actually been shown that, long-term, native prairies are cheaper than my, uh, than, um, turf grass. Okay? So here's another opportunity there, you've got, uh, some low areas in this area, again, some pretty wet in there, some of those pines are a little on the distressed side, 'cause they're probably a little bit too wet, so that's another opportunity. Anytime we see these little, kinda catch basin low spots, these are where we look for opportunities to, to retrofit, even with small little rain gardens, to keep some of that water out of the catch basins, and to add beautification, right? So you've got, same kinda, it was a very, sh, on a theme here, there's your swale right there, good opportunity to come in, put in native plants all the way along there, and then leave the occasional cut through, right, so that people can still access the playground equipment, they don't have to go through it, they, oh, you wanna make sure you're putting the spacing in there for people to access. You know, really good example here, this is a good opportunity to maybe come in, do some reinforced pavers in there, 'cause it's, uh, obviously being used as an access point, right, by maintenance staff, and then put in some rain gardens on the backside here, so you can kinda see the, the before and the after picture. So, I didn't render every one of them, but we, uh, have a couple other rain gardens on there, so we have about a half a dozen rain gardens or so, and native prairies along the, kinda the backside of the Civic Center Plaza. The other area we looked at is the parking lot, uh, one of the things, I would never, we just heard a presentation about pavement and, and the need to replace pavement, uh, I would never advocate for ripping out perfectly good pavement, but when pavement gets to the end of its lifecycle, there are alternatives and other things we can do, and so that's what some of these pictures are gonna look at, right? So, you can come in here and, around that catch basin, so we've got a catch basin right here, going right into the storm sewer system, retrofitting that with paver blocks around that catch basin to intercept that water, get some of it into the ground before it gets into the storm sewer system. Okay? So here's another opportunity, you've got a curb cut right here, water's going through the parking lot, through that little curb cut, and then into a drain, we can convert all of this into a much larger bio retention cell to capture and clean up that water. Okay? And those bio retention cells could also then go along the, the entire backside of the, the parking lot there. So, last couple pictures, here's some parking of the front, good opportunity to put in permeable pavers, there's a lot of different permeable pavers on the market that are available to us, this is just one conceptual artistic rendering, right? You got some failed pavement in here, it's starting to go down, you can see, you got this, uh, catch basin right there is already kinda subsided some, so level that out, put that in, put pavers across there, use pavers for the walkways, so that it's more visual for people, pedestrians, to go through. Okay? And then here's the last kind of, uh, concept, right? So what happens with permeable pavers, I'm sure there's probably gonna be some questions about that, but typically what happens with permeable pavers is you do not need to have permeable or porous pavement across an entire parking lot, really about a quarter of the parking lot needs to be permeable, and that's all you need to capture all the water and infiltrate that you would, so you can see, we can sheet flow all of this parking lot into pavers just on one side, so, use traditional asphalt for about, um, half to three-quarters of the parking lot, and permeable pavers for the rest of it, and that'll get you the water quality benefits that you need. So here's the summary of what we would recommend for Madison Heights, okay? So, just a couple high points right here, you see this, obviously, it's a pretty big ticket item there, four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, but, I like to point out two things, right? So for that amount of money, it, it works out to be two dollars and seventy-one cents per gallon, so the, for the cost of a price of, of a gallon of gasoline, you're capturing and treating this stormwater in perpetuity. Every time it rains two inches, you're capturing and treating that, okay? So that's the value of green infrastructure, is it keeps working for you. Does it need to be maintained? Yes, it needs to be maintained, but the, uh, the Clinton River Watershed Council is committed to also kinda helping train staff and getting people up to speed on what maintenance takes, right? So, for those improvements, you're gonna keep about a hundred and sixty thousand gallons of water out of the Clinton River every time it rains less than two inches, that's how to look at it. So, implementation, what have some of the other communities done, right? So we, uh, you already heard about a five thousand dollar mini grant available for the Clinton River Watershed Council, for any of these projects, it requires a one-to-one match, but that one-to-one match can be in-kind services, so you could have, you could use the money to buy the plants, and then have volunteers make up the difference for actually planting them in the ground, okay? And the Clinton River Watershed Council helps with implementation, they will help with, uh, developing maintenance plans, and they will also help with grant writing if you're seeking larger sources of funding, so sometimes these mini grants are used as matches towards larger grant applications. So, from, uh, two thousand fourteen to two thousand seventeen, as I mentioned, this was an eighteen community, so when I give these presentations later this year, then this community will also be highlighted, uh, on this map, but you can see, we've worked everywhere from, uh, St. Clair Shores and Harrison Township and New Baltimore, up to the headwaters up by Clarkston. Okay? So here's what was proposed in Clarkston in two thousand fourteen, they were one of our fir, our first ones, so you can kinda see, here's our graphic rendering, uh, a bridge, some stream bank stabilization, some opportunities for, uh, education along the water there, okay? This is what it looked like before, right? The bridge was actually starting to fail, they boarded it up, and that's the bridge that got put in, and you can see that they did the, uh, stream bank stabilization, and they put in the rain gardens, and one thing I like to talk about for this bridge, right? So I'm just gonna go back for just a second, just kinda say how this stuff has a life of its own sometimes, right? So that's our rendering, that's what we said it could look like, right? That's what got built, you can kinda see in the background there, that bridge was a hundred thousand dollar donation from that gentleman right there, he liked it so much, he was a local business owner, he put up the money for the, for the, uh, bridge, 'cause he was excited about the opportunity, and then he's out there planting the plants, the mini grant went to putting all those plants in. So Clinton Township, they had a pond, so this is the, the before condition right here, this pond, they use it for fishing, fishing derbies, but there's a lot of geese problems, a lot of water quality problems, we recommend that they naturalize a lot of the pond, and then formalize the fishing access for their fishing derbies. That's what they brought into, so in two thousand fifteen, that's what they planted, two thousand sixteen, and then two thousand seventeen, by two thousand seventeen, it takes a couple years sometimes for native prairie plants to really bo, uh, pop, they used, uh, DPW staff and Parks and Rec staff for their match, and the labor, and then the plants. Okay, Clinton Township, they also recommend, uh, we also recommended they do their parking lot over, that was their parking lot in two thousand sixteen, and then they came in, and when they redid their parking lot, they put in rain gardens and bio swales, and, and redid the parking lot, using concepts that we recommended, and that's just one of the rain gardens in their parking lot. Two thousand fifteen, Rochester Hills, so here's an area where water came streaming off of these roads right here, um, there's a catch basin right there, then shot straight into the Clinton River, you have this mowed turf grass area, we eliminated that catch basin, and then we put in a stepped rain garden system, so it dropped down into this rain garden before spilling into the Clinton River, and that's what it looked like when it was implemented. Sterling Heights, so here's the Sterling Heights Senior Center, um, here's the old parking lot right there, this is what it looked like before, we recommend putting in bio retention cells on the ends of these, and then reorganizing the parking a little bit, that was our rendering that we gave them, was this rendering right there, they went a slightly different route, but they did put in, they went with, uh, black mulch, so they had a slightly different aesthetic look they wanted, but they went in and put in the, uh, the parking lot islands that we recommended. So these are just examples of some of the mini grant opportunities other communities have put in, and with that, I will field any questions you might have.
How do you calculate the, uh, reduction in runoff?
Uh, so we use a spreadsheet model, it's an engineering model, so it's basically using the curve number approach, so, the, uh, so what happens is, the more impervious the land is, and the more turf grass you have, the more water runs off, as you convert that back to impermeable surfaces, so porous pavement or rain gardens, there's a certain amount of water that's held in the soil, and a certain amount of infiltration that happens, depending upon the soil you have underneath, and so there's a, an engineering formula that, that goes into that, so that's all spreadsheet-based calculations, and that spreadsheet is going to the city as well as your local consultants, so they have those calculations available to them.
Thanks, the presentation's great, I, I appreciate, um, the diversity of communities, thank you for showing us different townships and cities.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please.
If I could ask, um, a question, um, the permeable, permeable pavers?
Yes.
Are very interesting, how thick are they, and what is their approximate life expectancy in terms of, if you have heavy vehicles on them?
So the pavers themselves are between four and six inches thick, underneath that is a couple feet of stone, limestone, that, that couple feet of limestone provides both the storage for the water as it slowly infiltrates into the ground, it also provides the structural stability for the pavers above it. The lifecycle, it actually lasts longer, they're concrete pavers, so they last longer than asphalt, and they actually tend to last longer than poured concrete as well, and the biggest reason for that is, the pavers themselves, because they have intentional gaps for water to flow through, there's no problems with freeze thaw. The reason traditional asphalt gets destroyed so much, and to lesser extent, concrete, is it's not supposed to have water in it, so when water does get in there and freeze, it cracks, so the freeze thaw cycle's what really causes all of our problems, those pavers are designed for the water to go through it, so you don't have all that freeze thaw problem. And if you put in the heavy-duty concrete one, concrete pavers, which is what I recommend, they've got like a thirty-year lifecycle, I mean, they, they last as long, if not longer, these aren't the little, like, three-inch patio pavers you buy at Lowe's, these, these are definitely heavy-duty. If, if anyone's extremely interested, there's actually three paver companies that, that I exclusively recommend, not that I get paid for them, but these are the ones I've installed other places, and I have confidence and faith in, um, I'm sure there's other companies out there, but there are three companies I know have a good track record in the Midwest.
And if there is any deterioration, can they be individually replaced?
They actually, absolutely can, great question, fantastic question. So they actually can be individually replaced, if you do have a, a crack at one location, or, uh, most of the companies, what they do is they'll have like a two-year warranty period, and the two-year warranty period actually has a lot to do with the install, so that if, for some reason, there is some settling, or differential settling, the first year, then they're susceptible to get hit by plowbades and cracked, so what they, most of the companies do is they'll give you like a two-year warranty, which basically says, we will make sure it's level for two years, and then after, if it hasn't shifted much in two years, it's not gonna shift very much, but if one of them does get cracked, you can individually take one out and put them back. Uh, the other advantage, depending upon the type of additional infrastructure that's underneath, is you can actually remove them, do repairs, and then put them back, which is another advantage, whereas traditional asphalt or concrete, you have to saw cut it, remove it, and when you patch it, the patch just doesn't work.
Right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
No problem.
Yes, Mr. Giddings.
Um, do you know of Berkeley, uh, I think they did a paving project, do you happen to know of?
I, I know nothing about the Berkeley project, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
So, I am aware of quite a bit of the Farmington Hills projects, I lived there for fifteen years.
I see.
Permeable asphalt does not work very, doesn't hold up very well, uh, for some of the Farmington Hills projects and the Southfield projects, but the pavers have, have done quite well.
That's a great concept.
So I, I do, the last thing I'd like to say, in, in addition, again, thank you for allowing us to come and, and talk about green infrastructure, and talk about, uh, water quality in the Clinton River, is, uh, I used to be a resident of Madison Heights, so the first three years of my life, I lived on Hales, so, so nineteen seventy-four I left, but this was where I got my start.
Mr. Mayor?
Welcome home. Yes, Mr. Sultis.
So, I, we appreciate your, uh, presentation, it's great, in, in fact, it was free, so it's even better, but, um, uh, one thing that I thought, um, I didn't see in there was, uh, Mayor Pro Tem's, uh, wash, splash pad, excuse me, do you guys do splash pads?
So, uh, a splash pad, the, um, a splash pad would not be for green infrastructure, it's definitely a community benefit, but that's chlorinated water, so...
Oh, okay, well...
Public health, you can't use rainwater for a splash pad, it's a public health issue.
Well, again, thank you, uh, and thanks to the, uh, council members who are here with us tonight, uh, thanks for your service, um, uh, we know that you're a nonprofit, a five oh one C three, and so what, what you do is so important, how you give, give, and give, and give, so thank you for giving the presentation tonight. Give. Any other questions from Council or comments? Okay. All right, are there no public hearings tonight? So the next part of the agenda will be meeting open to the public, uh, the meeting is open to the public for, uh, anyone to address any subject they want, uh, it'd be helpful, uh, if you give your name, address, and any affiliation you have, and, uh, be so kind to limit your comments to three minutes or less, and, uh, I suspect, uh, there may be, uh, additional And I suspect there may be additional comments regarding the Boomer, the dog case. So I'll read the same statement I've read before. Our city council has been apprised of this matter and that it's pending in several courts. Per our longstanding practice, the city council does not comment at public meetings on pending litigation, since it is inappropriate to do so. The city council cannot interfere with the legal process. The city council cannot interfere with any judge's decision, and the city council simply cannot obstruct justice. Of course, if anyone wants to make a comment, this is the appropriate time to do so on any subject. But city council will not be responding to any comment of any subject. Welcome, Gloria.
Hi, Brian.
The floor is yours.
I'm Gloria Moore at 27368 Dartmouth. Friends of the Madison Heights area, senior citizens is having another third Tuesday meeting, March 19th, at 5:00 over at the Oak Street House in Hazel Park. And everyone is welcome. Beverages and snacks are on us. And we take suggestions on that. And also, Jessica Wilson, our vice president, is running our rally, our Madison Heights rally, over at the Soberg Towers on 27787 De Quinder in Madison Heights. And it's on the March 25th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. And we'd like everyone to come and enjoy that, too. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I know this isn't your agenda, but it's mine. And I know it's in your city, and it's not mine. But I'm still here to inform you. I've been researching. And I would like to give you some facts. I gave you some last time. And I would like to give you some facts, and then I would like to talk to you about Boomer. The coyote facts that I'm telling you tonight is the population that these animals are increasing. They're not decreasing, they're increasing. They live 15 years, some older. They can become five, five-and-a-half feet long, and they can weigh 20 pounds to 60 Mating season ranges from December through January through March and part of April. So if you have a coyote alert here, it's not going to be done till probably the middle of April. Coyotes have a keen sense, a sense greater than a dog. They have a hearing that's unbelievable and a smell that no one can compare to. They hunt day and night and are always hungry. And they can jump a fence four to feet, feet, and sometimes larger, sometimes over eight feet tall. Since the 1980s, the media has falsely portrayed the pit bull as monsters. There is absolutely no factual basis for that narrative. Pit bulls get a bad rap. Pit bulls are the second, and I bet you didn't know this, but they are the second most tolerated breed, tested by the ATTS, which is the American Temperance Testing Society. First being golden retrievers, second being pit bulls. Pit bulls do not have locking jaws, as you might have heard. There is no such a thing. And according to the United Kennel Club in the 19th century, they were bred for a nanny dog. People used them back then to protect their children, their homes, their families. And they were just great at it. They were great dogs. And like I said, I have four in my family, and I have little children in my family. And I'm telling you, if anybody ever went to touch one of my great-grandchildren, they would have to go through the dog first. And these dogs are one of the sweetest, kindest dogs there is. They're tough-looking, they look like a muscle builder, but the looks isn't the problem. The looks is the problem, it's not what's in their heart.
Ma'am, you've used three minutes. Do you have a conclusion?
Yes, I do. So one more thing I would like. I would like to let Boomer go. This dog has, just, does not deserve what he's getting. He has rights. He lives, he breathes, he eats. His daddy is waiting patiently for him at home, and he is bewildered by not being at home with his dad. And keeping this dog is, is just, I don't know why. I would like the police chief to come to one of these meetings and tell us what he has, that is proof that this dog is on death row and for what reason. There is no proof, there is no, nothing. Okay? I would like you to take this dog into your hearts. Go where he is being held. Look at his demeanor. Touch him, love him, pet him. He's waiting for each and every one of you to go there, and you can go and visit him. Go see what he's like. And please help us to get this beautiful dog back to his owner, who is paying thousands and thousands of dollars to keep his dog on death row. So I know you can't do a lot, I know that, but you can help us with something. There has to be something, somewhere, that can be done to let this dog go. He's been held seven, eight months now. That's not necessary. It's either you're going to destroy him, or you're going to return him home.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And I'm not giving up. You're going to see lots of me.
Fantastic. You're always welcome back. Thank you.
And I would like to pass out a picture.
Ma'am, to me, please? And I'll distribute it. Thank you. Thanks for coming back.
Thank you. This is Boomer.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Shields.
Good evening. Councilman Mayor, referring here before you again, referring to ordinance 2129. At the last council meeting, I did ask the question of whether or not the soccer field was included in that 500-foot variance. I also want to know whether the water park in the nature center is also included in that 500-foot variance. I would love to see some, one of our council members be brave enough to approach everyone and move that 500-foot to 1,000 feet. As I have said previously, sex offenders have 1,000-foot leeway against wherever, a school or church or whatever. And I think we need to expand that. There are many cities in Oakland County, so far, that have upped out of recreational marijuana. I'm not talking about medical. I'm talking about recreational marijuana before it starts getting, running rampant through our city and affecting our children. And last but not least, if they were Madison Heights residents, sitting at home or going to watch this on their email, I encourage them to attend the next council meeting, which is March 25th, and voice their opinion on recreational marijuana. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Incidentally, I am Pat Shields.
Would anyone else like to address city council? Chairperson Lee. It's nice to see you.
Good evening. My name is Deliza Lee. I live at 31-800 Harlow, Harlow Drive here in Madison Heights. And I have a flyer that I wanted to announce for the Crime Commission Committee. I was hosting a child abuse and neglect forum at the fire department here in Madison Heights this Thursday, March 28th, 2019, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And the address is 313 brush. This is a free event. There's no fees, there's no pass, no plate, no nothing like that. But we just want to give the information, they're going to have a panel to address the issues of child abuse and neglect, because it's a huge, huge dialogue that we need to bring to the city of Madison Heights, so people can get an understanding. And when they see child abuse or anything, to be able to speak up and report, even if they don't want to get personally involved, sometimes we don't recommend that. But just be able to take a photo, license plates, picture, anything to report, any kind of activity, to protect our children here in Madison Heights. So once again, this is a free event. It's going to be hosted, held at the Madison Heights Fire Department, March 28th, at 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Would anyone else like to address city council?
Good evening.
Hi.
Last city council meeting, I asked you a direct question, Mr. Mayor, about what could you do to help with the Boomer situation? I was hoping that you would have an answer for me tonight and not the same rhetoric that you've been reading every other city council meeting. I do my own research. I don't just go where everybody else goes, and I'm not a sheep. So I called not one, but four attorneys, who all told me that you absolutely can settle this case. It would not be an obstruction of justice, or a resolution can be made. So I am standing here, wondering, talking to you right now, eye to eye, and I'm wondering, are you lying to us? Or do you simply not know the law? You are an attorney. This is stuff you should know. And I will be here at the next city council meeting, and I hope that you have something else to say. Once again, I'm going to remind you, we are not going away until Boomer goes home. Good night.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council? All right. No one else is asked to be recognized, so we can end that portion of the meeting. And the next item will be communications. We have one communication. It's item C1. It's from Bethany Christian Services regarding their use of Civic Center Park. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. Bethany Christian Services is requesting a waiver of the $50 reservation fee to use Civic Center Park Pavilion C for the foster adopt family picnic on Saturday, July 27th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Staff and I recommend that council approve this event, subject to compliance with the council's policy on uniform insurance requirements for special events.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Your honor?
Yes, Mr. Bliss?
I move that we approve this event, as well as the waiver on the fees, making it subject to compliance with the policy on uniform insurance requirements for special
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve the request of Bethany Christian Services to allow the event and to grant the fee waiver, all subject to compliance of city council's policy of uniform insurance requirements for special events. Is there discussion from council? Okay, let's vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. We can go to reports. We have three tonight, two on the agenda, and the third one that we added earlier. The first report is D1, from the city manager, regarding the SafeBilt contract. Mrs. Marsh?
Yes. With the retirement of the CDD director, the city contracted planning services only from SafeBilt. The city currently has a contract with SafeBilt that requires any changes or additions to this contract to be council-approved. Planning services have been being utilized from SafeBilt since Jim Schaefer's departure in January. They are currently being utilized on an as-needed basis, approximately eight hours a week. We plan on using these services until the CED position is filled, which is expected to mid to late April. Staff and I recommend approval of this amended contract with SafeBilt for planning services through May 1st, just to give us the flexibility of the new start date.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council approve the amended agreement with SafeBilt contracting for a period which will extend into mid-April.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said something wrong.
I'm sorry. We'll clarify the motion.
It actually, I'm not sure when the new person's going to start, so I ask through the 1st of May. But we'll only use them until the new position is filled.
How about we just do that? If I can correct that motion, just say until the new person is hired. And if it gets too long, then we can always talk about that.
Okay. That's acceptable. Is there support for the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilmember Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve the contract amendment between the city and SafeBilt for planning services for a period to extend until...
The CED position is filled.
The CED position is filled. Is there any discussion on this item? All right, let's vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next report is item D2. It's from the city clerk and city attorney regarding the boards and commissions review. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. Since the last council meeting, legal counsel has reviewed the board and commission resolutions, which were approved at the last meeting, and the ordinances, which were up tonight for approval on second reading. Although there are no significant content or meanings that have been changed, minor changes were made to the resolutions, just to clarify some meanings within each document. Under the reports section of the agenda, which is now, staff recommends approval of the arts board, the charter ordinance revision committee, the city school liaison committee, and the community development block grant review committee, environmental citizens committee, information technology advisory committee, and the multicultural relations advisory board, just to be amended for clarity. And as last time, you can take those in a block and approve all of the resolutions at once.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. What's the wish of city council?
Your honor?
Yes, Mr. Bliss?
I move that we adopt the proposed clarification amendments to the resolutions for the arts board, charter revision committee, city school liaison committee, CDBG review committee, environmental citizens committee, ITAC, and the multicultural relations advisory board.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Thank you, sir. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilwoman Corbett, to adopt the proposed amendments for the resolutions regarding the boards that were cited. Is there any discussion on this item? Let's vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. We have one more report. We added it to the agenda earlier. We'll call it item D3. Would be a motion to approve the tentative agreement between the city of Madison Heights and the patrol officers' union for a three-year duration, July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2021. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council approve the recommended tentative agreement between the city of Madison Heights and the patrol officers' union for a three-year duration, beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2021.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilmember Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve the tentative agreement between the city and the patrol officers' union for the three-year term. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. That concludes reports. We can go to bid awards or purchases, and we have one for consideration tonight regarding the community development block grant yard services program. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. Staff and I recommend that council award the CDBG-funded yard services and lawn service program contract to the lowest responsible bidder, Zimmerman Lawn &amp; Snow, at a unit price of $15 per lot for the 2019 mowing season, and to authorize the city to proceed to the next lowest responsible bidder, Expert Lawn &amp; Snow, at a unit price of $18 per lot, in the event that the contract with Zimmerman is canceled due to non-performance or other issues. The budgeted amount is not to exceed $35,589 per the CDBG program year.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Scott?
I move that council award the CDBG-funded yard services lawn service program contract to the lowest responsible bidder, Zimmerman Lawn &amp; Snow, at a unit price of $15 per lot for the 2019 mowing season, and to authorize the city to proceed to the next lowest responsible bidder, Expert Lawn &amp; Snow, at a unit pricing of $18 per lot, in the event that the contract with Zimmerman is canceled, due to non-performance or other reasons.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettings?
Support.
Thank you, sir. A motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Gettings, to award the contract for CDBG-funded yard service to Zimmerman Lawn &amp; Snow at a unit price of $15 per lot for the 2019 mowing season, and authorize the city to proceed to the next lowest bidder, Expert Lawn &amp; Snow, at a unit price of $18 per lot, in the event that the contract with Zimmerman is canceled. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One comment, and that is the staff report indicates that the amount of the contract, whether it's with Zimmerman or with Expert Lawn &amp; Snow, is not to exceed $35,589 per the CDBG program year. Does the maker of the motion agree with that?
Yes.
Support agree?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, hearing no other discussion, we can vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Next on the agenda are ordinances. We have one item for consideration, Item G1. It's from the city clerk and city attorney. It's regarding the boards and commissions. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. As previously stated, legal counsel reviewed the boards and commissions' resolution and ordinances. A few minutes ago, we approved the resolutions, and this is ordinance on second reading. So this would be for the Historical Commission, the Crime Commission, the Library Advisory Board, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and the Housing Commission. Staff and I recommend adopting these ordinances, and you can do them in a group as we did last week, or two weeks ago.
Thanks, Mars. What's the wish of City Council?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt on second reading ordinances 2131, 2132, 2133, 2134, 2135, and 2136.
Yes, sir. Is there a support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Grafstein?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to adopt on second reading ordinances numbers 2131, 2132, 2133, 2134, 2135, and 2136. Is there discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just want to clarify that it's the intent of council to pass the ordinances on second reading as amended, the highlights of which are in red in the agenda.
Mr. Bliss?
Yes, that's my intent.
Councilor Grafstein?
Yes, that is my intent.
All right, so the motion is to adopt the changes as recommended on those ordinances, the sequence of 2131 to 2136. Any other discussion? Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. We can go to minutes. Would someone like to address the minutes from 225-19?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt the minutes as printed from 225-19 of the regular meeting.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Grafstein?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to adopt as printed the minutes from the regular council meeting of 225-19. Any discussion or amendments? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. There nominations? Are there any nominations to our boards and commissions this evening? All right, we do not have an executive session scheduled, so I invite any closing comments. I guess we'll begin with Mr. Corbett.
I do have a few items this evening, Your Honor. First of all, I've been getting some complaints on an item that actually I had seen online a while ago, related to our friends from Royal Oak, the Daily Tribune, and the distribution of their papers. Apparently, when they, and I'm not sure, I have a suspicion, and I haven't seen one in a while. I live in a condo, so we don't get it delivered. Probably everybody else up here knows what they're talking about for certain. I think it's their advertising circular. It comes in that colored plastic, and apparently they do a mass distribution, just right down the street. Everybody gets it, whether they ask for it or not. And I have noticed it is becoming, at least in terms of the people saying, you know, "I'm tired of having to dig this up out of my lawn, especially after it snows. I didn't ask for it. I'm getting it anyway." And I'm gonna impress you with my memory now. We did face this issue once, back in 1965, 1966. How's that? There was a paper back then. Mrs. Shields, you'll remember this, the Shopping News, the Detroit Shopping News. You remember that paper? Everybody got one in all the neighborhoods. And it was a problem, and they eventually had to agree to a subscription service before they distributed it. I know that because I was a paper boy for that route. And so anyway, back to the present, though. It is becoming, I know, a problem. A bunch of people have commented on it. Could we look into this? Could I ask staff to look into it and see what the basis of the distribution is? Are they properly permitted? Let's start with that. And then, and what the authority is, if it's a subscription basis or not. I suspect it's not, as I'm getting a head shake.
I'm just gonna comment that I'd say maybe in the last month, we've started receiving it. We never did, and now we do. And generally, there's two identical papers with ads in one plastic bag. I don't even know what that's about, but it is not subscription.
Okay, well, like I said, the problem is people aren't expecting it. They're not looking for it, and they're finding it in their bushes, their lawns, and so on. And so, first of all, let's, you know, see what we can do about that. At least get it under control. Like I said, to me, just at a quick glance, it doesn't look any different than an unlicensed distribution of handbills or literature in the neighborhoods. You know, they have to be permitted for that. I remember we went through the trauma of developing that ordinance. I think that was one of your first contributions, Ms. Prince, to our efforts. If we could look into that, I'm not sure. I guess, I guess Community Development would be the one that would start with that and then go from there. I wanted to acknowledge the changes going on in the Madison Public School system, and certainly, I'm sure I speak for the city council in extending our support and best wishes to the new administration down there. They're going to be going through a hard reassessment process over the next few months, and it's a great, it's a great program. It's great staff. So I'm hoping that it all works out well for them, and they're able to put all this behind them and move forward. But I know they can count on us. They can count on our support and whatever we can do to help out. And just a reminder, Friday's at 1:00 p.m. I know Mr. Bliss looks forward to that announcement from me. Every Friday at 1:00 o'clock, I'm at the library. If anybody has any issue they want to talk about or complaint. Complaints, we're gonna send to Mr. Saltis down there, but the compliments I can handle, so.
I just don't remember that far back.
Yeah. I guess that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Corbett forgot to say that you can bring him those papers at the office hours. Bring them all to him. He'll recycle them. It's perfect. A few things tonight, Your Honor. First and foremost, I loved the green infrastructure presentation today. There's so many exciting things that we can do with that. I would love to have us take a deeper look at the available projects, and I think that this should also go before Planning Commission to reevaluate. You know, we've been making improvements in some of the expectations for parking lots as new businesses are coming in or as there's been redevelopments. Making, I mean, I don't think we can force it, but there might be some opportunity to make things optional or reduce parking requirements if something like this is implemented. So I'd love to see that go before the Planning Commission sometime in the near future, probably for the next meeting. Secondly, as was mentioned earlier, karaoke's coming up. I will happily recruit anybody and everyone to come out. It's gonna be a fun event. You're only gonna have to listen to me sing for about three minutes. So it'll be wonderful. You'll hear a lot of better singers than me up there. But I think that the big thing for me, and I know I speak for the arts board, is that it's getting the community together for an event. It's gonna be a great time for a great cause of bringing murals into our city, particularly at the Park Shelter Building, which you saw in a lot of those pictures, for the green infrastructure. And I kept looking up and saying, boy, that's gonna look so much better this summer. And so please come out. If you can't make it, you can donate to the Arts Board on the city's website. There's a direct link. There's a PayPal. It's tax deductible. It's a great opportunity to make a direct impact into the community, and I hope you'll join me. Finally, my last item, I spoke last meeting at length about the desire to take this, I guess, up conversion, revamping of our boards to the next level, as we talk about the applicants and what an ideal applicant looks like for each board. And so some of my goals, and I know some other council colleagues have their own, I'd love to, you know, hear some of the discussion, either closing comments now or at a later meeting. But some of the things that I would love to see fairly quickly are limiting board applications to one single board, and then limiting the request for background information and their experience to that specific board, its mission, and its use case. So it's more about the applicant and their passion and love for that board, and their experience and what they bring to the table, as opposed to just the applicant in general. It might be possible that somebody is highly qualified to serve on six of our boards, but we should review each one individually, each application tied to the specific board that they want to serve on. So I'd love to see the application simplified, put down to the single board, and then I'd also love for, whether it's the council representative on every board, staff, or the boards themselves, to come up with a one- or two-sentence ideal profile. So that way, anybody who goes onto the website can see the type of, the type of person that the board would love to see serving in that role. What is the type of experience that we're looking for? And it could be very broad in general. I mean, for the arts board specifically, it would be a passion, love, and experience in the arts, very simply. And so when you would go to apply for the arts board, I would love to see your passion, enthusiasm, and experience demonstrated specifically for the arts. And so I'd love to see that rolled out for our boards. I'd love to start the discussion and see how we can present that information a little bit more specifically for those of us who want to make sure that we're making informed decisions about who is serving on these citizen boards for us. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Gettings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to wish Madison School District all the luck in the next few weeks with their new endeavor, and I wish them well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Sherman?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of quick congratulations. First, to our police chief, who was appointed to the Federal Advisory Committee on Juvenile Justice. What a great honor that is. He'll be representing the City of Madison Heights and the state of Michigan in Washington, where he will be dealing with the importance of juvenile justice and doing what's necessary to prevent juveniles from entering the criminal justice system. It's a great honor for the chief. It's a great honor for the city. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to Ramona Sanchez, who just received her certification, as I think Cheryl Prince would say it more correctly than I, but certification as a clerk. And congratulations to both of them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Manager, Ms. Marsh?
Just one quick thing. We're having our first Neighborhood Roads meeting this Wednesday, and if you're on one of those streets, you can come and still attend karaoke, because it's anticipated to be from 6:00 to 8:00, and you're just gonna miss the hot dogs. But karaoke starts at 8:00, well, 6:00 to close, but you can still make it. So you can come to both.
Thank you. City Clerk, Ms. Prince?
I just wanted to add on to City Attorney Sherman's comments about Ramona Sanchez obtaining her certification. It's a three-year-long process for her to do that. She has to attend trainings. She has to get professional education. So it really takes some commitment to accomplish that goal, and I'm very proud of her. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Grafstein?
I want to thank Representative Ellison and Senator Osser coming here tonight to update us on everything that's happening in Lansing. I appreciate them taking time out to do that. And also, I want to thank the Clinton Watershed Council for the presentation today. As Mr. Vitale mentioned, the ECC did see most of that presentation a few months ago. I actually met two of the members who are here tonight. I met them a few weeks ago when we attended something called Water School, which isn't as boring as it sounds. It was a two-day intense training, presentations, much like we saw here, but a lot of the background was there. And then we finished up with a tour of the George Kuhn Drain just down the street by the soccer park. But we also went to a couple of places in Sterling Heights, and we saw some of what they did firsthand, you know, how they had made those changes. And it comes on the heels of a few months ago, Mrs. Marsh, and the mayor and I attended a placemaking presentation seminar. That was another day that we did. And everything that Mr. Bliss is talking about with the murals, we can do the mural, but we can also do that with this. We can have the rain garden set up, and you could see from the way that they had it set up with the playground, you still have the areas that the kids can run in. One of the things I'd also like to see with that is to make sure that the plants that we're putting out are pollinator-friendly. For those who are paying attention, our bees are dying, and our butterflies are having a really hard time. So I want to make sure that what we put in our parks and what we put on the public property is pollinator-friendly. And to that end, we are in the process of reviewing our ordinance right now, because one of the items that is not allowed in the city is milkweed. And for those, again, in the know, that's what butterflies eat. So if you have milkweed on your property, we're not coming for you. We're looking at revising our ordinance. If anyone has any suggestions or comments on either the pollinator-friendly or just the stormwater in general, you are welcome to contact me, and I'd love to hear ideas. One of the things that was talked about tonight was there's a couple of different grants that were discussed a few weeks ago at Water School, and it looks as though we are pursuing them. The smaller grant, the $5,000, if we can get some volunteers in to help with the planting, that would be huge, because then we can take all that money and we can just buy the plants with that. So anyone who wants to volunteer with the planting, that would be great. As I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, I am currently in the middle of a fundraiser for Leukemia Lymphoma Society. Anyone who wants to help out with that, whether it's a sponsorship or just a donation or however, contact me on that. And Deliza Lee, the chairman of our Crime Commission, mentioned a really important event that we're having in a couple of weeks, March 28th. I'm just gonna repeat this, March 28th, at the fire station. It's about child abuse prevention from 6:00 to 8:00. If you can make it, please do. And then finally, Mr. Bliss was talking about the boards and commissions. And I think I've heard from a couple of people that they're concerned we're going to get rid of boards, that we're going to be kicking people off of boards. And that's not what we're looking at. We're looking at making our boards effective. There's no point having boards and commissions that aren't doing anything. It's 9:00 o'clock. We've been here for an hour and a half, and a lot of what we're doing may seem like we're not doing a lot of things, but we really are. With some of the boards and commissions, we want to make sure that they are actually accomplishing something. Some of this is administrative, and we have to do. But when our boards and commissions meet, we don't want them bogged down with administration, and we don't want people sitting there saying, oh, I'm here. Well, what are you doing? We want to make sure that it is someone who is, you know, on the Arts Board, is someone who wants to be doing something with the arts, not someone like me. I'm not gonna be on the Arts Board. It's not my thing. I like looking at a nice picture. I like listening to the music, but it's not my thing. So I want to make sure that the people who are on the different boards and commission are doing their thing. They're doing what they have their passion for. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Scott?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to again publicize that we're having our annual run for the health of it, Run Walk, and that's five kilometers. It's gonna be on Saturday, April 13th, and it starts at 8:00 a.m. in the morning. Good way to start your day. If you can register before April 12th, it's, you're gonna discount a rate of $20. If you wait till afterwards, it's on race day, it's $25. So please register for that, and you can do that by going to our city website. So please register for that, and you can do that by going to our city website, and I think that'll be a fun run. I also wanted to compliment the new Madison School Board, because they changed their meeting dates to Wednesday nights. So it used to be on council nights, and we could never go to both, or they couldn't come here, and vice versa. So they did change them to Wednesday nights, and they're going to be at Wilkinson Cafeteria. And I believe that they are making preparations to have those recorded and so that we can all take and see what the re-ones are and inform ourselves of what's going on with the Madison Schools. I did have a question of, Mr. Bliss, when you were speaking tonight, did you infer the fact that you would rather prefer to have people, one person on a board? In other words, not multiple members? In other words, that only join one board?
No, no, no. That is not what I was saying.
Okay. What did you mean?
Your honor, can I?
Yeah, please.
Of course. So I would like each individual application for each individual board to be considered uniquely, so that way the applicant themselves doesn't have to take in a very small amount of space, that room, to tell how they would fit into three or five different boards. So if you want to apply to more, that gives you the opportunity to give your experience in each one, as opposed to trying to jam it all into one section, and so each application would be individual in nature.
Okay. I just, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to clarify that. I was reading that, and I know that so many of us serve on multiple boards because we have multiple interests. In fact, I've always served on the youth, all the time I've been here, Coalition and Youth Assistance, and it would be hard-pressed for me not to serve on other ones. So I just want to make sure that was clear with everybody. And thank you for changing those boards, because I think a lot of them needed attention and kind of a cleaning house. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Sultis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I read on the newspaper that Wilkinson tomorrow night is putting on like an anxiety awareness.
Angst.
Angst, yeah. So there's a indie film on it, too, so I'm trying to get there. I think it starts at 5:30. They have a dinner, and then the movie and conversation afterwards. And I'm glad to see that the Crime Commission is putting on the child abuse seminar. If people aren't aware, that Madison Heights is the first city to have a no spanking zone on city property in the state of Michigan, and probably third in the nation. So I think I'm pretty proud of that. And I've been trying to get the data, because once I read that in September, I talked about the skating audit from the General Auditor's Office on CPS in Michigan, and they had numerous citations, and some were serious. And so I read that out loud, and I followed up with it to get the report to finalized plan. It took a while, but I finally got it. And so I'm reading through that, and I'll present that. I think it's important that we understand that as well. Also, I've been trying to get the data, so I got the national data and the state data for child abuse, but I'm trying to get the city in our zip code. And I tell you, it's been a fight. It's been four weeks now, and I still haven't gotten it. I went to the governor's office. I went to the state Human Health and Services Department. I didn't get callbacks. I went to the county director of Health and Human Services. He didn't call me back. His secretary did, and wanted to know why. I wanted the information. I said, "Does it matter? It's public information." So I even went to the county commissioners. So hopefully, I'll get that. I mean, I like to attend, and if I get that information, that data, I can present it at that meeting. But I think it's worthwhile, and I appreciate you doing it, and I plan on attending. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to publicly thank Deliza Lee, who serves on our Crime Commission, for all the hard work she's done. The first public forum was very important regarding human trafficking, and the second subject is just as urgent for our public to understand. So, Deliza Lee, I want to thank you personally. I also want to thank your colleagues on the Crime Commission and the support you receive from the Police Department. April 1st is the deadline to pay your property taxes if you're delinquent on taxes from 2016 or earlier. The city does not handle the foreclosure. The county government handles the tax foreclosure. But I understand the county just sent all the cities and townships lists of properties that are subject to the tax foreclosure process this year. And I noticed that some other officials personally go door-to-door to just try to make contact with these property owners, and I would like our city to do that. Some warm body, I'll even volunteer, but some warm body to go to the addresses before those people lose their home to tax foreclosure at the hands of the county, especially if it's a principal residence. What I've noticed is that many people who fall behind on their taxes, something catastrophic happened in their life. Maybe it was a terrible injury, an illness, loss of employment, or a loss of a loved one, or maybe some sort of emotional health crisis. Of course, these property owners must pay their taxes. They must do their share. However, there are many resources that these people may benefit from. So I would like the city of Madison Heights to get that list of properties subject to tax foreclosure this year, and make a physical, personal contact at those addresses to share resources for them to save their property before it's too late. Let's see, what else? I will be singing this week. Hopefully, there's no recording of it. Thanks to the Arts Board for organizing this event. I hope we can raise a lot of money for them. I don't know how I'm going to do it, but I'm also running in the 5K, and I'm really out of shape. So I hope my poor performance can inspire other people to join in and beat me on all accounts. So I don't think there's any other business for us tonight. So thank you for joining us. The meeting is adjourned.